I was working on logging in. Is there a way to remove the passcode?
The passcode, there's not a way to remove it. That thing on the city's website should be pulled straight there. There's no way to remove.
Give it a minute and see if you can get on that one. You might have been just going to the zoom app on the phone. Want to hear from Ash and all? Well, now we can wait on it. Well, I'm sorry. I have a moment to say. For trying to. For trying to. So. This is maybe not a good song or joke.
I got an half dance routine I can carry.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
I feel like.
I could find some naked toes and heels and shoes.
We can't, we don't have a coil at all.
We're gonna have to work hard for it.
But we only have to do that for the happy.
Being mad and driving.
Right. So could we proceed and then?
Yeah.
As long as he is on by the time we do the action items, then.
Technically, you're supposed to have a forum to have a meeting, so.
So even to call the meeting to order.
We wouldn't be able to call a meeting to work because we don't have a forum to do that.
People here who want to talk.
Go ahead and talk.
Does it need to be by Zoom or can we just call him?
You could call him. That would, that would be acceptable.
As long as he can hear everything, that's okay.
They should have a call in the.
Justin? Is it? Three, four?
He can't, he can't get in the passcode. It's not working on like many of these.
They should have a call for audio.
If there's a number listed.
And the pass, if he could text him, here's the passcode. I don't know if he's.
I, I texted already. It's not working.
Okay.
Ashley can't get in there either. I think so. I have a single one times.
You can do that yet.
Ashley's the same way. She can't get in either, so. We're, we're gonna try to get them both to call in, so it might just be audio only. When you call in, you gotta put in all the number of passcode junk though, don't you? If those passcodes aren't working, that's not gonna work either, right?
They call them on two different people's phones.
Um, it can go. He will have been a face and I'm like. What I'm assuming is there is all the language through what she's saying. He, he doesn't go into.
He can't.
But we can, if they call in the numbers through Zoom and everything else over the speaker, like when everybody can hear, I think. Yeah, we can do this. Somebody's gotta make it right here. That'll work, but they're probably gonna. That might have a pass.
Better to.
Yeah.
You're gonna be able to.
Okay. All right, do whatever. You guys wanna use your phones to call one of them and somebody else to call another one and then we'll just set them there in the middle and turn up the volume. Would that work? Let me see if the line. There, my number. Oh, so I can do it. Well, I sent it to their email, not her. Are you there Chuck?
Hello?
Hi. Can you join us this way possibly?
Yeah, I'm able to do this. Zoom isn't working. Yeah, things are working, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Who wants Ashley then? Um, we're gonna try to get Ashley on them too and proceed because we have a lot of visitors this evening.
Yep, I appreciate that. She was struggling to get the Zoom link as well, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, let us get her here and. Okay, are we able to add? Call through that or not? Well, I, I sent it to her email the same time I did his, but he answered and she didn't. And I. So. I don't know. I can see if I can. Let me see if I can add her. Do you want a phone number for her? You, you have hers. I have. Yeah, what's your phone number? I guess maybe. Hold on, actually I have it.
Hey.
Yeah.
And you send them that passcode to Obama?
That was on the website, yes.
No, that's wrong. The one that he had on the screen was right, because it just let me.
Okay, there's.
So they, they use this other passcode they can get in.
You wanna try again? No, not easier.
Like a. Texting this oh seven five nine eight six. Then you get it.
Okay, Chuck, there's a, a different meeting passcode. You wanna try one more time to get in, or would this be more convenient? The number. Yeah. Okay. It's zero seven five nine eight six.
Zero seven five nine six.
Yeah, okay. Did you send it to Ashley? Same link that was on the website though. Once, once he's on and going, we can go ahead and start, so we'll have a quorum and then hopefully Ashley can join us then. All right, okay, I'm gonna hang up. Okay. With there being a quorum present, we'll call a meeting to order. Do we have somebody present to do an invocation this evening? No? Okay, we do.
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, invocation, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day and some of the rain that we got. Well, thank you for the leaders that you've given us. I pray that you use them in a great and mighty way as they use their time and gifts and talents for leadership for our community. Pray that all that's said and done tonight will bring you glory and that you would bless this town in your precious name. Amen.
What do we wish? W of the States of America. Into the Republican Party's change. One nation under God. In the end of this bowl, with the voting head up for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda? No.
I knew that we approved the, the agenda as presented. Exactly.
Okay, um, with a move in a second. All in favor? Aye. Chuck? Probably have to use. Are you there Chuck?
Yes, I am now.
Okay, um, there was a, a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. All those same sign. Um, okay, next, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, this is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium and state your name and address and speak respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Michael Owens. I live at two twenty-four West Thirteenth Street, and I do have prepared remarks. I don't, I hope I can finish them in three minutes. Sure, these are things. Actually wearing two hats today. Uh, I'm also on the board of directors of the Senior Center with those lovely ladies in the rear who'll be making their own presentation in a few minutes. I first came to Concordia in two thousand twelve. It was of my mother who lived on West Ninth Street, my sister Faith Nice Wonder. Uh, at the time, I remember it was difficult to tell a house in Concordia. It was a virus market and some houses lasted on the market for a year or two. We all know that's no longer the case. Houses sell quickly these days and some of that's because contractors buy them up to rehab and either resell or rent out. But another reason is, especially since the COVID pandemic, people are moving to Concordia from distant places. Um, my own mother's house was sold several years ago to a family who moved here from Oregon, supposedly one of the nicest states to live in. Accordingly, prices of houses in Concordia are on the rise and that's attested to by the increase in appraisals. Tax receipts for the city are rising, all of which are positive for the city. Concordia has a lot going for it and that's the reason I bought several other houses for the rental income they provide. And one of those houses is at four forty West Sixth Street. I'm currently rehabbing that property. Um, due to a tenant who left it a mess and was evicted. The rehab is almost completed. The question is, who would want to rent the house when it's adjacent to a house that from the street looks like that it's going to collapse? I believe the address I'm referring to is four thirty-six West Six. I spoke with Bruno, the City Building Commissioner, and he informed me that letters have been sent to that property, but nothing really has been done. Now, I'm not gonna, I don't have to cite all of the provisions. I, I refer to my notes about new, new, new one, nuisances. But, uh, one of the provisions provides that weeds and grasses on residential property which is covered of height has a blighting influence on the neighborhood. That those weeds should be presumed to be blighting if they exceed twelve inches. And I have photographs that I'll be happy to submit to the commissioners that showing is the, the weeds and, and the, everything is, the bushes are all over the place on the front of the house. And also Concordia has a zoning code, and I need not refer to every section implies here. Suffice it to say that the part in question is not in compliance with the zoning code. And my question is, why have a zoning code if it's only selectively enforced? There are plenty of houses in worse shape than the one I'm referring to, but that begs the question. Once again, if you have an enforceable code, why not enforce its provisions? I'm not in favor of condemning every property in town and having people of modest means evicted. But I've made a substantial investment in this city and the value of my rental house is adversely affected by my next door neighbor. Something more than their letters is necessary to correct the problem. Letters have not been affected in the past. I urge the commissioners to take action, enforce the zoning code, which will allow adjacent properties to enjoy their fruits. We want Concordia to continue to be a place where people want to live. And move to. If the commissioners take positive steps to correct some of the deficiency houses, Concordia will continue to be a place we can all take pride in our investments.
Thank you, Mr. Owen, for bringing our attention. We'll take that in consideration. Hey, but Ashley just joining. Actually, that was public comments. Um, Michael Owens commenting and he has some prepared remarks, so we can share those with both Ashley and Chuck, um, after the meeting.
As best as for everyone.
Thank you. And then, is there any other public comments? Anybody online or present? Okay, we'll move on to proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, um, starting with the Senior Center budget request.
Good evening, and I'll make this short because you guys are cutting into my nap time. Don't laugh. You two will get old. I have previously submitted our new expenses because, you know, we broke away from Manhattan and are on our own now, have had wonderful, uh, submission from the town. They have really supported us and today it showed up when we had meatloaf for dinner at over thirty people. Where previously we were lucky to get fifteen. We have also increased our staff. And this is part of the reason we're asking for an addition in funds. Because staff and food, we are covering completely now. We're asking for twenty thousand if possible. They want the food and paying for staff wages. I have already submitted all the paperwork. If there are any questions, please let me know. Not between five and six, which was nap time, or two and three. Thank you.
So, your request is an increase of ten thousand dollars?
Yes. Please. Pretty please. Lots of pleases.
This is Ashley. Um, can I ask you how many folks you're serving right now?
I'm, I'm sorry. Let me mess up here.
How many, how many people are you serving? I think today was your first day back in food service for this, this year.
It was. Uh, we had fifteen meal on wheels. We're trying to, uh, encourage people to come back out of Belleville. We're having a little bit of difficulty there. Uh, they had called eighteen people up to Belleville providing meals on wheels while we were shut down. Part of the reason we were shut down when we separated out of Manhattan, they took everything including the kitchen sink. It was theirs. They had a right to take it. But they took, um, the dishwasher. They took, um, our vegetable steamer. They took quite a bit of things that we had to replace, which cut into the money we had set aside for this separation. But thirty in-house. I believe there was, um, maybe seven of our takeout and fifteen meals on wheels. And we have heard from some others that will be wanting meals on wheels. And we have lower the age. If you are six, under sixty. And you would like a meal? Six dollars. Not six dollars and fifty cents, six dollars. So, uh, you can call in and pick it up if you're real busy, or you can join us and eat with us. A lot of the seniors won't come because they think they're not seniors. We have minds of children and bodies of old people. But, uh, you know, I'm not snickering here. Uh, in ten years, I'll be back. But, uh. And we figure if we get the younger people, the sons and daughters to come in, they'll bring in their parents. That way we can get the parents in. Our activities have grown. The people that come in for activities. We'd like to get some more in-service people in. Right now we have the VA coming in once a month. The hearing aid guy coming in once a month and twice a month we have people doing blood pressures. So, our, uh, we have bingo. And we have book club. We have a big group that meets for coffee. If any of you women are interested, it's a wonderful gossip. We learn everything about Concordia and outlying areas. But, uh, this is all part of what we are offering. We have pool players. We're not having pool players come in in the afternoon as well as the morning. So we're really moving in activities. We hope the food bring, keep more people in. And just, we're growing. And if anybody says anything about my weight, you've had it.
I'm grateful that you started the meal, the meals again. I was very concerned about that because, uh, you know, it's very needed, especially the meals on wheels, I believe, is really needed in this community.
Well, that was our intention. What took so long was because we had have it, the, uh, in the kitchen, the free tank, free sear, ah, the sinks, the three sinks. Had to have an L shape that led to the dishwasher. Could not have a seam in it. I went through the book for food and that became kind of very interesting and things we couldn't have. So that had to be specially made and then the plumbing had to be changed and then the wiring had to be changed. So yes, we were concerned too about the meals on wheels. We were thankful that Belleville was covering some of them. They picked up eighteen people. The hospital was also covering, but the hospital was getting a little bit upset from what I heard because the older people were staying to visit. And people that were on a short time period didn't have a place to sit. So we're trying to bring those people back. Because they can sit as long as they want, drink as much coffee as they want. But, uh. The food is the biggie that, you know, feed the hungry and they will come.
Especially, it's good food, right?
Well, today was excellent. Anybody that had the meatloaf? It was a big change because bless her heart, our previous cook believed that meatloaf should be made with strictly meat and a little bit of ketchup topping. Now, those of us who have cooked have always added. Our new cook, she knew how to make a good homemade meal.
That's good thinking.
So.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments or questions for? Senior Center request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the next is a Resource Center budget request.
Good evening. Thank you all for letting me come and bother you. Um, if you don't already know, my name is Tanya Maryland. I'm the Executive Director of the Cloud County Resource Center. Uh, this year we have a, a small increase to ask for on our budget. Um, we would like to ask for an additional two thousand and five hundred dollars for the purchase of buying food. And I'm sure this will come as no surprise to anyone in this room that that sticker shock reaches all the way across the county from every sort of corner of folks who have to buy food. Uh, it is one of the things that we want to keep our focus on, especially since we are the home of a food bank and we want to make sure that that pantry is well stocked. Um, in case you're wondering sort of what we've been working on to address this, we're streamlining our processes and purchasing, but it's always been one of our initiatives, one of our key points to make sure that we spend some of that money locally. We want to make sure that we continue to keep Concordia's money and Cloud's money in Cloud County, buying things in our local businesses. So that is part of what we're trying to focus on. Um, and as those prices continue to increase and we have been told are going to probably do so for a little bit longer, uh, but we have also applied for thirty thousand dollars in additional funds in other places so that we did not have to try to bring that cost home to our county as much as we could diffuse it to other places and in other ways. Uh, this year we did launch three new pantries, so we want to make sure that those stay sustained and stay protected as well as protecting our food bank, which is of course our chief purpose. Uh, the new pantries are our homeless pantry, our hygiene pantry, and our infant care supply pantries. Uh, so one of those is obviously going to be a little bit more expensive than the others for those of you who do have babies in your household or who recently had, you know, that the cost of that has gone tremendously on things like formula and diapers. So that is one of our big spending, big, big sort of money draws right now to make sure that that is protected so that our smallest residents of Cloud County continue to be cared for as much as we can. Uh, some of our other pantries, for example, our homeless pantry has already been provided for for funding at least to, to present up through the end of July, but with its own fundraiser here in the spring. So that one is just something that we are supplanting for the future and making sure we protect all of our food interests for our future. Uh, other things coming, since I know last year one of the big discussions was what will our director do if she becomes full time? Um, and as promised last year, one of the things we are working on for this year is relaunching Club Eighty-One. So you will get to see that first round of programming coming up here in June as soon as those dates get set. We're in final prep on those now. Um, to launch what will be our first games day, which will start as a family games day, and then we expect that to break down into smaller groups for the different demographics of students. You will also get to see our Master Chef Kids Cooking Clamp Camp coming here in June as well as Kids Writing Group, which will be the cousin of our adult writing group that we've had for the last year. So those things are all coming on board soon, which will be what we hope will be the beginning of Club Eighty-One's relaunch. So we hope to be able to pilot those numbers here during the summer to see what interests we have among kids as we meet with our brand new formed Programming Advisory Board. We don't always feel like we know what our community needs best, so now we've gone back out to our community to pull in some interested folks, people who've been clients of the food bank, the resource center, its programming. Uh, the folks who live in our community, other agencies to try to figure out which direction will be the best course of action for us for our near future. Um, as always, we don't sit very well in our office. I don't like to sit in my office very long. It's how I get myself into trouble. Uh, so we're always working on new programming and that's what we hope to do is continue to find new relevant things for our community and protective things that we've always done well for our community or tried to do well for our community. Um, if you have any questions, please let me know. Uh, one thing is I would like to thank you all for your time and your efforts and everything that you guys have done for my volunteers, my board, and myself. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
No motion needed. Uh, moving on to OCCK Transportation Budget Request.
All right. Hi, Trail Printer, OCCK Transportation Director. And I always love to review our vision and mission statement. We are here driven with commitment and respect. We venture out to ensure the independence of our passengers for all communities we serve. Uh, so that's the basis of why we do what we do and a couple of really amazing stories from our passengers this past year. Uh, passenger S, I'm able to go to all of my appointments without worrying how I will get there and get home. Even going to my specialist appointments are taken care of. Thank you OCCK for giving me a safe ride. And then Passenger W, the dispatchers are very accommodating. It takes my mom a while to tell them her schedule, and they are patient and kind to her. So a couple of success stories, but we've got even more than that. Hopping into our ridership in the past year, 2023, we gave 6,010 rides to Go Concordia passengers. So you will notice a slight decrease from the previous year. That has come from our need to expand into the county due to some funding. KDOT has completed one year of ninety percent, ten percent local match funding. So KDOT provides ninety percent of that funding with state and federal money. And then we are in charge of supplementing that together in partnership with you for that additional ten percent. We are now going into year two, so this request is going along with that. But sometimes for that longer distance ride, it makes it a little bit difficult. People want to go now. They would like their McDonald's french fries now. They would like their ride to where they would like to go now, not in forty-eight hours. And so continuing to educate the public on get your ride in as soon as possible has been helpful. But we are recognizing that is something that is holding, holding passengers back. So if there's ever an opportunity that we can expand service, add more drivers, add longer length of service, we would love to do that. But securing the funding so it's fully funded and we don't have to worry about insecurities there is number one. Hopping into some demographics, forty-five percent is focused on medical. They're going to the new medical facility, maybe chiropractic dentistry. They are getting their medical needs taken care of, and that care to make sure that they feel comfortable getting to their appointment then creates some longevity and structure in the, in how they're healing. If somebody's not able to get to an appointment, they're likely to cancel, 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 and then situations might reoccur, making it worse and more expensive for everyone. Fifteen percent of the rides of that 6,000 rides were work-focused. Common locations, Walmart, Subway, a lot of food-focused work here. Recreation and shopping is the other fifteen percent. People just getting to do what they want to do around town when they want to do it. Might be liquor stores, might be shopping downtown, might be doing grocery, grocery shopping at Walmart. That also bleeds a little bit into that nutrition because it is general public transportation. I don't say, hey, you have to tell me why you're going, where you're going. You are going to the donut shop to socialize, go for it. If you're going to the donut shop to get your breakfast that morning, go for it. So there's always an other section. Luckily, we've been able to pare that down to five percent. That's really, really awesome. But if you guys would like more information on that five percent, I can definitely get that to you. Education and residential, that's in our two five percent sections. Residential is if somebody's going from one home to another home, maybe visiting a parent, visiting a friend, having some social time there. And on to our request. So for our next fiscal year, so January to December, our local match would be about $28,262 for that ten percent partnership with KDOT. Their ninety percent share is 254,362. So KDOT is truly pulling a lot, a lot of this partnership. Now, we have in the past requested $5,000. That is my, one of my formal requests tonight. And then anywhere up, in addition to that, an additional $23,000 would help bridge that. I have secured some funding through Salina Regional Foundation to provide medical rides to and from the hospital here or any specialist appointments at any one of their, their locations. Tammy Walker is a frequent location, and then we do have some Medicaid transportation funding as well. If somebody is receiving dialysis and needs to go on a longer trip, maybe to Hayes or Salina, they can apply for that transportation at no cost to the passenger. And then our partnership with Medicaid does pay for that. So we do have some supplemental funding. So that costs that additional $23,000 would be up to. Between fares and the other costs associated with this, it might not need to be charged. That's just what we go in. We like it to be secured. If we made a lot of money in fares, then we can, we can decrease that money. For example, last year, we had, we had about, about $7,000 in local fares. And so that would then take that money off of that top of that additional $23,000 request there. So I've now said a whole bunch of numbers. Thank you guys so much for hearing our request again, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
You asked the county.
So OCCK in general partners with Cloud County in a different capacity than just what the transportation department does. So we do have county support.
But not specifically.
Not specifically for transportation in the capacity that I'm asking, but the fact that they support OCCK, that does in some ways trickle down to me.
And what is your fare again?
It is two dollars each way.
Do you know how much Medicaid funding you secured last year?
Not specifically for this location. I can get that for you.
I would, I would be interested.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt.
Absolutely.
That's enough. Thank you so much. No motion needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to our action agenda, minutes of the May 1st, 2024 meeting.
I'd move to approve the minutes of the May 1st, 2024 meeting.
Second.
A second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Appropriations ordinance number nine.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number nine, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. And moving on to Federal Funds Exchange.
With permission. Little background on the Federal Fund Exchange is a voluntary program that allows the local public agency to trade all the portions of its federal fund allocations in a specific federal fiscal year with KDOT in the exchange for state transportation dollars. The exchange rate for the 2024 is ninety cents of the state funds for every dollar of the local federal obligation authority exchange. State funds will be paid on a reimbursement basement basis as the LPA incurs costs for transportation-related projects. The amount of funds to be exchanged is $70,712.91. So this amount, the city will receive $63,641.62. Exchanging these funds would allow the city to be more flexible the way the city uses the funds. But the city's exchange of these funds is programmed would allow for a variety of projects with a wide range of scopes that the federal aid program would not allow, such as roadway construction, pavement restoration, stuff of importance to us. There are a lot of projects that the city could do. Some, there are some of the, these are, those are just some of the projects that the city could do without following the federal aid project. So.
So none of these on the list you can do with that money unless you're exchanging?
It's, you can do some of them, but there's, it's, it's very difficult. You have to go through a lot more hoops. What, if, if you exchange it with KDOT, you wouldn't have so many hoops.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the request to exchange federal, federal funds in the amount of $70,712.91 and to apply for the reimbursement of $63,641.62.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance 2024-3221 zoning change, 337 West 11th Street.
This is a request from the GSD 333, Representative Mr. Shubrin, and they would like to, the reason for this rezoning, what their initial idea is, is to have a, like a townhouse-type thing where they could put two single-family dwellings attached on that lot and split it. That, they may be changing their mind on that, and I was actually contacted by Mr. Shubrin the other day, but the, the zoning change, if accepted, would still allow for a single-family dwelling if they decided to go that way. So this would give them the option because it meets a requirement for a townhouse or a two-family dwelling, and it also meets the requirement for a single-family dwelling. If they want it to be two separate lots, then they can go ahead and continue with the lot split that they've applied for and the initial plan they had. But if they decide not to go that way, they, they would still be allowed to build a single-family dwelling. So I can mention and go ahead with the zoning changes in case, because I'm not sure. Mr. Shubrin's here to answer any questions that you have any, but I don't, I don't want to, I, I would recommend that we go ahead and change the zone. If you have any questions, I'm pretty sure I can answer them.
It does make some sense to change it so that it could be a little bit more versatile for that particular lot. As I remember in the past, that because of the cost of materials, it would be difficult to recuperate even their costs if they built a single-family dwelling. So some of that has changed, Kelly?
Just kind of looking at trying to keep costs down as much as we can. You know, looking at the cost of building like two kitchens and four bathrooms, you know, for essentially building two homes. The thought was to keep the cost as low as possible, but still find something that would sell. And so, you know, we, we've spent a lot of time considering both options. So having that option before we finalize the plan, you know, would, would be helpful. Because our ultimate goal is for our students to learn and then also something that to, to sell. We definitely don't want to be in the rental business. We, we want to build this and sell it and hopefully move to the next house at some point, so.
Anything additional? If anybody has any questions on? So you are leaning towards a single-family home at this time?
I think kind of it's time, but we're still working on it. Just from a cost, cost basis.
I move to approve ordinance 2024-3221.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024-3222 zoning changes for lots 1 through 14 and block 165.
Yeah, this ordinance is, as a result of Mr. Seacard wanting to build a single-family dwelling in a, on a piece of property that has been, I believe, industrial zone since it's in, since zoning was made a rule in Concordia. And now he wants to build a house down there, and it's pretty easy to extend the manufactured home subdivision district to this, these lots, which allows for a single-family dwelling, and you can actually do more than that on it. But it would be a little more difficult, I think, to do a residential-type lot that, because that would be more restrictive. So he's requesting this, and then if we get that, then we'll go on to the next one, which would open it up for development for a new single-family dwelling, which he plans to do. He's got the, he's got the mission in mind, so we'll see if he'll be able to go through with it. Any questions, any concerns?
So this will be a single.
Bruno, did you, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, I was, I was clarifying. This is, this would be a single-family dwelling, but a.
It's a manufactured home subdivision. It's actually an extension of the manufactured home subdivision to the north.
Right.
Across Third Street, which is pretty much an easy way to do a zoning change is just to extend a district. But it'll, it would allow for manufactured homes, mobile homes, and also all the way up to single-family dwelling, amongst other things, churches and parks and things like that, but.
And is the plan to have multiple there or just?
No, I just want one single-family dwelling. This is going to end up being a parcel of it. We are going to address it off of Fourth Street, and that way that would become a backyard. He could, at some point, they could split parcels up if they meet the requirements for minimum lot size and can get the utilities in there. They could actually develop the lots to the north of the alley section.
Would that require additional planning, or if, if we approve this as it is, then that additional develop could take place on its own?
Yes, it could. Short of site plan, determined, but.
I, I guess I'd be hesitant to, to change the zoning for the manufactured home subdivision. I'm not opposed to supporting single, single-family home development, but I think that there's been some challenges that we've had with those in the past. So I, I guess I'm cautious about approving a, a change. While it may be the intended purpose to build a single home, if it allows for the opportunity for further development without an opportunity for a conversation at that point down the road.
Do you want me to explain it from here? The, the, the commission does have the power to install a more restrictive zoning that would allow the development that wished for. So as a matter of fact, you can say, we're not going to give you the MHS zoning institute. It's, it's not restrictive enough, but we'll give you the single-family dwelling or the, I'm sorry, the R1, which is still residential in nature. So you're extending a residential district. So if you wanted to, you could give it an R1, two or three, or one being the most restrictive. It would only allow a single-family dwelling amongst a couple of other things, you know, accessory structures, churches, parks. I have to look at the zoning rights, see what else, but you couldn't build a duplex or have manufactured homes on it. No businesses, home-based business would be allowed, so. That would be an option, and we talked about that, but I told him it might be easier to bring an MHS across because then people would just think it was an extension of the district. But a lot of times you extend a district to extend the use in that district. There's single-family dwellings allowed, so.
That would be my preference, but certainly don't speak for everyone.
Well, I mean.
What about manufactured, single-family dwellings?
Those are allowed.
What they building.
There's a very fine definition on the manufactured home and a mobile home. And a manufactured home can be a residential design manufacturing home with pitch, roof, siding, porch, and the appearance of being on a perimeter, permanent foundation, but the foundation has to be permanent. We actually, actually issued a permit for one on 234 West East 13th Empty Lot. I issued a permit yesterday for a residential design manufactured home that's going to be on piers, but they'll have to do a false permit or foundation that does not include trailer house security. piers, but they'll have to do a false perimeter foundation that does not include trailer house security. That's the only difference. The rules are very subtle in the difference between what you can put on a R one lot compared to MHS. Because a MHS lot, you can do the same thing, but it doesn't have to be permanent. You just put a slab on ground, stack box on it, strap it down, you're done. Single family dwelling district, you have to make it permanent. The foundation has to be permanent and lots protected.
This is not in a floodplain.
It is in the floodplain.
The others.
We need to, I can elaborate on that a little bit, but uh, we think that's going to change in that area.
Okay.
Based on the new maps, but also Bruce is willing to build to the floodplain standards if necessary, which means uh, lowest floor, one foot above base flood elevation and the crawl space that flood nets allow floodwaters to run through without damage and can withstand seventy two hours of standing water.
If necessary, based on if the floodplain changes or not.
Based on what's going to happen in the future to our map floodplain.
And if we approved it as just um, a manufactured home, like.
Same, same thing. Trailer house.
Right, but then he, I mean, after that happens, like what, to Chuck's point, there could be five manufactured homes then possibly or multiple um, splitting, like you said, adding to.
Nine.
Nine, yeah.
Based on the amount of lots that that being changed.
Bruno, this, this request was for lots one through fourteen and so in the package, there's a sketch.
Nine is the top part.
So in in the package, there's a sketch with a blue highlighter outline that outlines a current parcel that's intended to be rezone.
Rezone.
If if that gets rezoned to R one, the, how does that impact the current? What do we call it?
Character of the neighborhood?
The, the current conforming salvage yard on the same property that changes to R one.
Oh, that use has, that use will have to go away.
With.
Once the development start, either one, MHS or not, that's not allowed in either. Any residential district doesn't allow scrapping.
Okay.
I mean, the little hobby, you know, guy that collects a five gallon bucket of copper every once in a while and that he can regulate that, but but yeah, major scrapping, which has been done down there for, oh, I can remember, but is going away. He intends to get rid of all that, clean that lot up and have a
And he currently owns.
A place in the woods in the city. He owns that and more.
Does more.
He wants to keep the ones against uh, is that Archer Street, uh, industrial zone for the potential use there that could be industrial, I guess, light industrial, which we have a nonconforming house on that uh, maybe fourth and Archer. That's been zoned industrial since industrial came in, or since zoning came in. And that's a a legal nonconforming. I will, yeah, you can't, but a motion can be made to give a a more restrictive zoning in R one. And if and if that passes, that's fine. That's what we'll go with. If if he doesn't get the zoning tonight or if it's denied, the zoning change at all was denied, then he can't come back for a year and ask for a zoning change on that same piece of property.
Were you saying, so he's planning on building one through nine?
No, he's planning on building uh, ten through fifteen on that. That's why a later ordinance has that out so he can get utilities across there. One through nine is going to remain.
Remain the industrial case, I had it such.
No, no, it's going to, it's going to change. The zoning will change, but he he's going to build on the part that's uh, nine, or ten through fifteen, ten through fourteen, ten through fourteen. I'm ringing it here on my phone, I'm dead.
Well, I'm like Chuck, I'm a little concerned if we go with this.
MHS.
Yeah. We've had too many over the years. We've had to tear daily. And there's still some that need to.
Oh, yeah, we're fighting them all the time.
So.
Nice, MHS.
So with that then, could I make a motion to approve the zoning to an R one for the stated properties, since that's his stated intention?
Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Okay, we'll get that.
Huh?
We'll get that.
R one.
Recorded and correct on the map.
Alright.
I think I'm there. I think I've got another one from there. Like I said, I'm waiting.
Motion passes.
I don't know what's going on here. I can't keep still. It makes me nervous. Oh, there we go.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty two twenty three vacating a portion of alleyway.
Yeah, this uh, this is the only way I saw this, him being able to develop like he wanted it and a lot of undeveloped land down there, a lot of uh, what I would call natural growth and that alleyway. I didn't want to try to vacate the whole thing, but the only way he can get utilities to his house on lots uh, ten through fourteen would be to cross that alley because they have to come from Third Street and we talked to Jeremy and about the sanitary sewer and the water and they can set uh, a a meter there and then he can run it the hundred and some feet to his house. The same with the sanitary sewer and we think it's low enough that he won't even have to pump it. It can gravity flow to there. But if we don't vacate the alley, then he would have to get a license from the city to put a private utility across the city easement and then he would have, every time something done down there, he would have to mark that, which I don't know that that would ever happen in the future, but this makes it a lot easier just to vacate that. And if we don't vacate all of it, it allows the uh, eastern third of that to still be utilized for the neighbors who are adjacent to that alleyway and may use it. I think they actually do, they even know it's undeveloped. You look skeptical.
So if you, I mean, if you vacate the alleyway, then it's vacated for ever.
Correct.
And how much of the license? And and what's the?
The license is, I don't think it's just the recording of it, the cost of recording it. I don't know if we ever charged for a license.
We don't.
We got a lot of that there. We we have a license with the the college has a license from us to cross their easement that they gave, an easement that they gave us to cross their property with our water. And those get confused. But.
I guess, wouldn't you want, I mean, if you were going to do some work, wouldn't you want your lines marked anyway? Like you said, they'd have to be marked.
Well, not if uh, not if you have to pay somebody to mark them. And they're your own private lines on your own private property, they're not going to get marked anywhere. But if they cross that alley and somebody's doing work within a hundred feet of there, they're going to expect them to be marked. And he will have to be on the list and you have to pay to be on the list. And we're.
Is this a paved alley or is it a gravel? What, I mean, what's the current condition of the alley?
Woods and.
It's the woods. It's not even an alley?
These, these, these part of that is uh, is not developed, but it's it's being used by the neighbor for access.
Okay.
There's no public utilities on it right now. It's not paved. It's not, it's not functioning as a full alley.
There's just a little block area and there's no public utilities in that because it's been so undeveloped for so long.
It's, it's an alley, but it's not an alley.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's an undeveloped, right.
Alright. Well, do we have a motion?
I would move to vacate the alley. If that's the direction we're moving in.
Just a portion of the alleyway? Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you, Bruno. Is that all yours?
Appreciate it.
No. Building trades.
No, he's still there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you got one more.
Is that hanging on the list?
Yeah.
This is Randy Greenwood's uh, term on the board of building trades is up by, I think, the end of this month, May thirty first and he's uh, put in an expression to re-up and he's been a pretty solid member for quite a, quite a few years and uh, just like any of the commissions and boards, it's, it's difficult to get new blood in sometime. But I recommend you reappoint him for another three year term. We'll continue on.
I move to reappoint Randy Greenwood to the board of building trades for a three year term.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to manager's report.
Thank you, commissioners. Real quick things tonight. First, our very first mural project is actually taking off, so the Rotary Public Concordia graciously donated five thousand dollars to the, to the mural project and we've located a a site, it'd be on the south side of the restrooms at Hood Park. Local artist Cody Schmitz will be painting the painting and Rotary's, one, one of their missions is to support childhood literacy. And so this mural accurately reflects the um, promotion of that childhood literacy and it includes the Rotary logo on it. We anticipate this work will begin sometime in the next few weeks. It should be completed before the end of June, so we're excited to welcome that. There's also been um, an anonymous donation that has provided the funding for the second mural, which would be on the south side of the bathhouse of the pool, will reflect an aquatic theme. An artist has been secured for that one. Um, unfortunately, the artist wasn't available to get that one done here before the pool season opens and in an effort to do it when there's fewer people around to avoid some, some mishaps, they're never going to wait until fall to be able to put put that mural up. So the first two murals will be, should be completed this year and are fully funded. And if anyone has any questions about that, um, they can visit with Jasmine Connor, they can visit with Brenda Gillen or any other members of the mural committee. So we're excited about that. Any questions on murals? Um, wanted to address nuisances a little bit. We are in full force on enforcement of nuisances um, right now. Uh, Lindsay has driven the town um, quite a bit in the last uh, couple of weeks. We've got more nuisances than signs available, so you will see a mixture of some different signs. We are using certified letters for absentee property owners. Definitely want to take a moment to encourage people to go ahead and mow and trim their yards. If you find that you've got neighbors that don't have working or functioning equipment and could use some help, please offer to help them. The grass is really growing. I'm thankful for the rain, thankful for the sunshine, but it does cause the grass to grow. We've also noticed an increase in property owners, both residential and commercial, that appear to not be mowing the space between the sidewalk and the curb. I just want to remind everybody that that in Concordia, that is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. Um, it's different from community to community that you go to, but here it is our property owner's responsibility to mow that, that space. So we encourage that. Finally, some great news. We found out right at five o'clock today that the Community Foundation for Cloud County did fully fund our grant request for the feasibility study for the Community Activities Center. And so our next step is to engage with a design professional to start putting together some floor plans, some rendering, some cost estimates associated with that to evaluate the couple of sites. Um, I think the last time we visited with you, you had a request to gather some additional public input related to that. Um, I did want to find out if you're okay with us moving forward with the architect we've been visiting with recently, which is Charles Renz of Jonesville and Renz. He's also the architect on the box hanger project. Or if you would prefer that we um, slow it down a little bit and to go through the RFP process for, for other architects in the area to, to bid on that project. Didn't have a good working relationship with Charles through my work with the um, school district in Salina there for seven years. He was the architect on retainer and so we knew that we, he had done quite a bit of work there as well, so got a good trust with them, had a good visit with them, I think Chris and Brad and I did, but if you prefer that we go out to RFP, we'll do that, but just let us know what you think. Would appreciate some guidance in that regard.
Has he done many rec centers or?
Yeah, he's, that's a lot of work um, related to schools. Has done, done several recreation centers, has done um, worked some in the medical field stuff, but he did, has done quite a bit of work with, with schools and activity areas, so has a good feel for what those spaces need to be.
He's inspiring.
Well, that was um, it was based on that amount that we requested the funds as well, correct?
Yeah, we, we visited with them just to ask kind of what would it take, give us kind of a ballpark of what that would be, so we used that as the basis for the request. And the likelihood of it costing significantly more, um, if we go out to bid is increased. I think when, when we first talked about this a couple of years ago, an architect that one of the community owners was visiting with had quoted us twenty four thousand dollars for similar services.
He brought up a lot of points in our conversation that we hadn't really thought about too. One of his comments had blown away that he gets excited about these type of projects. We've done several of them.
Did a lot of work with the Y M C. I think he's the Y M C, he's in Salinas, the retained architect for the work that they do as well. Yeah, you can slide right now. We don't have to decide tonight, that's fine.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I mean, we're, we're excited. We want to go, but. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like the idea of proceeding because that's what we based the request amount on and, and that, that was a very reasonable amount. Um, I also want to make sure that if we're going to move forward with a project like that, that we make really good decisions. Um, and make sure that we take the community's uh, needs and interests and, you know, have all those in mind when we proceed with the project, so.
Yeah, and this, and this step one is really just to really get a feel for it. So it's to take, take that input, put that down on paper. What's it going to look like? Where would it fit? What would be the best spot? How much is it really going to cost us? And then we bring that back to us and say, do we want to move forward and then how are we going to pay for it? So this is, this is really step one. We're, we're not able to get to step two without step one.
Can we have community input though, prior to that? I mean, I, I wouldn't want to design without the community input.
Yeah, we can't do that.
I agree with those comments, Amy. I think it's really important that the community gets to then put at the front end.
Chuck and Ashley, are you guys in favor of um, tabling this discussion or would you like to just proceed with this architect?
Uh, the only, the only reservation I would have and it may be one that we can just take care of tonight, uh, since it is grant money, are there different stipulations where, where we have uh, less of an obligation to go out to, to bid? Um, I think that we've had a positive working relationship. I, I think that I, I have faith that this organization is a good one. I just want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do um, as, as a, as a commission to make sure that we're bidding what we need to bid, um, and if we don't need to do that, I would support moving forward with this as it is.
I can verify with Brenda at the foundation, um, but it's my understanding that they're not bound to those same rules that we are for, for bidding. They did fund the grant request at a hundred percent, so there are no city funds going in toward this phase of the project. So if that makes a difference, that's acceptable.
I'll confirm Amy that there's no need to go out to bed based on grant criteria.
Okay, thank you.
With that, then I'd support moving forward and, and keeping uh, the momentum moving.
And we can visit with Charles too about how to, how to gather that input. So he was one of the architects that was involved with this Salina bond issue too, that we worked through as far as gathering, gathering input for some of those, those spaces too. So I, I know that he's gone through that process and, and knows how to do that, so he can help guide us through that. That wasn't included in the initial um, funds request that we had from him, but I think we, that's also something that, that we could do on our own. We've been able to do it with the comp plan, with the housing study, um, with those kind of things. I think we've been through it enough that we could design that in here as well without having to engage in services for a fee. We can make that work.
Did you do the Salina? The new like rec center there with all the courts?
Yeah, he was, he was involved with the Field House project. Um, the ones that I'm most familiar with are the ones with the schools and Kelly might be able to help me out with this. I think the operations center, Salina West, he was heavily involved in Salina Central remodels and Salina South. So, kind of those.
But your last one?
That's, that's the last name on my report, so thank you very much. I appreciate that.
That report. Moving on to staff reports.
I'm going to keep this quick unless you guys have questions.
Um, last Thursday, the petition for eminent domain was granted, uh, so the next steps are, um. Well, in granting that petition, they also, um, the judge also approved the three appraisers that we uh, have to nominate. Uh, they have oaths that they will sign that I will then uh, upload to the court. Um, and then what we will do is get them out to, what they will do is assess the property, they'll make their own. Assessment of how much the property is worth, then they kinda have a little meeting, essentially average that, for lack of a better term. So once that is done, they let me know that is done, then uh, I will set a date for the appraisal hearing. Um, last time we did an eminent domain proceeding, what we did was we did it uh, about thirty minutes before the city council meeting started. Um, so if anybody, what we have to do is when we get that date, I then have to publicize for one week in the newspaper. Uh, here in King Cordia, so everybody knows, I generally, knock on wood, nobody uh, shows up. And honestly, if anybody showed up, they would have to have an actual interest uh, in the property to kind of argue the value. Um, so once that takes place and that is finished, what they'll do at that meeting is announce this is how much it is, I'll say, okay, does anybody have anything to say? Anything like that, usually nobody does, and I wait a few minutes and I close the meeting. At which point in time I send the final paperwork, uh, the report of the appraisers, uh, and then once the judge signs off on all of that. I do an order transfer indeed, so right now it's just basically a lot of paperwork for me and one more meeting. So, we are moving along ideally, um. Ideally. If I can get them together quickly and I can get notice in the paper, I would very much like to have. I might be pushing it to have the first meeting in June, I, I'm aiming for that, if not, I think we can do that very easily by the second meeting in June. We have that appraisers, appraisers meeting, and if for some reason that appraisers meeting lets work for them on a, uh, one of those dates. Uh, we can always do a little earlier on a different date, I just have to ask Amy to keep the doors unlocked for me for a little longer, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Glad to hear it, moving along.
Yep, alright, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
So, I would like to talk to you guys tonight about the rabbits. So we are starting to receive some complaints about the rabbits up in mainly east of the car wash in about four or five block radius. Um, some of the complaints have been they're eating the flowers, um, they get holes in their yards. Um, some people are for them, some people are against them, um, but we are getting a lot of complaints from people that they want them removed. So I reached out to the Kansas Fishing Game and their suggestion was is we trap them and relocate them. Outside of the city limits, which um. Animal control, we're, we're willing to trap them and advise the people if they, the public, if they catch them, then we will pick up the traps and. Get hold of um, the Kansas Fishing Game and they will relocate them to unknown locations. Um, they didn't wanna tell me where they were relocating and, and I think they do that for purposes of. They don't want people to go visit the rabbits wherever they're relocating them, but. So, I, I guess I'm kinda asking your guys is guidance and support, is, is this something that. We want to do is trap these rabbits and relocate them, or have you guys been receiving complaints? Um, I did visit with uh, Mr. Hord today that he lives at the corner sixteenth and all the, where all the rabbits seem to gather. Um, he's very passionate about his rabbits, but he understands that if rabbits are on other people's property, he understands that they probably need to be relocated. He, he wasn't saddened by it, he, he just, he's very proud of his rabbits though, and he says that people from several other counties drive around. Come over to visit his rabbits and drive by and real slow and. He's like, I should set up popcorn stand because there's that many people drop by. I'm just trying to keep everybody happy about the rabbits. And I've been, he even told me that I'm in a bad position on making complaints on both good and bad about them. I didn't know if you guys have been receiving a lot of complaints.
Are these actually his pets?
Well, he claims that three years ago that some of these rabbits started showing up at his residence and he is. Eventually, yes, turned them into his pets, he's got them named and.
But not all hundred.
No, 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 but I, I will say that. One of, one of our um. One of the um, residents in town um, complained that she had forty seven rabbits in her yard with a pitcher and that's a lot of rabbits in her yards and.
And that was three blocks away.
Yeah, so, um, today while visiting with him, we counted forty in his yard, um. Just standing there talking with him and. I, I understand, he, he said that, you know, he, he pointed around the blocks and said, well, these people help feed them, these people help feed them, these people help feed them. And they all like the rabbits as well. Well, unfortunately, there, there are some people that do not like the rabbits and they're voicing their concern and want me to do something about them, so. I guess the best option right now is I don't want, I don't wanna create a storm about this, I just. My suggestion is, is we rent out these traps or, or let these people borrow these traps and trap them and then. We go remove them and hand them to fishing game and relocate them. That they're, then down the herd, so rabbits reproduce about every twenty eight days, so it is, I mean. Next year at this time, we could have a thousand rabbits in that area, I mean.
Alright, so I mean, that's kind of a Band-Aid solution essentially to try to, like you said, thin out the herd, but. I mean, they could literally take over the town.
Yes.
As cute as they are, and the reality of domesticated rabbits surviving in the wild. The coyotes and the other things is very. But it is not our concern how they survive, I guess.
So the, the, the other option is too, is, is we have looked at different ordinances. Um, there is actually ordinances in other towns, I think Rose Hill is one that has a very well worded one on rabbits and it basically. And I show, I don't have it from you, sorry, but it, you have to have a fence, have them behind the fence and you can only have four rabbits per resident. So there, there is some options there a- as well, um. I'm open to any suggestions because the twenty five years of law enforcement, I've never had this incident, so I mean, any help would be great.
The, the breeding thing is, is the issue.
Yes, yes.
It's not gonna stop. You gotta get rid of it.
Yeah, I, I mean, we really need to reduce the herd drastically, yes.
I mean, that, that seems like a good first, yes. Um, as to thin out the herd using traps and humanely relocate them to a destination near water and beautiful skies.
Yeah, that's, that might be a good idea for the future, but I would endorse. Uh, catch and release.
I mean, that's, that's a good start, I mean, it's, it's not gonna. It's not gonna be the last time we have this conversation, but it's a good start, I guess. And, and like there is some neighbors, I mean, if everybody takes four and, and has them, you, can you spay and neuter a rabbit?
I didn't check into that yet, I think, I'm learning a lot about rabbits. I'm sure you can.
Or with like four boys. Four boys and those person takes four girls and they put them behind a fence and then, just, you know, adopt or have a doctor rabbits.
Like I said, it, it's, I, I think there is a lot of people out there that do support them and, and they like them.
Yeah.
Um, but the problem is, is not everybody supports it either and I understand, you know, they got a nice yard and green grass and flowers, they don't want. A rabbit eat their stuff, because they've taken pride in making their house look nice and stuff. And they will eat wood and stuff because they're on the decks and stuff, I mean, they'll, they'll destroy wood, so.
And that's, and that's what's causing us to need to do something as well, it's not just the complaints and, and trying to balance who likes and who doesn't. But our current animal control ordinance does not limit the number of rabbits right now in particular. But it does say that if there is an animal that is causing damage to the property or a form of letting influence on a neighborhood that, that we. And it should address it, um, and so this is, this is one way that we, this is the most humane way that we found to address it. I definitely prefer to be humane.
A- and the reason I partnered, I guess, would, you wanna say partner with Kansas Fishing Game, because we really didn't have no property to go release them. On and they have different avenues to take.
So, and that's not an issue, like putting domesticated animals out in the wild to breed with other rabbits and then you have like. New breeds of wild domesticated rabbits.
I, I don't think wild and domesticated generally, I, I don't know.
I mean, they're very different, they're very different rabbits, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I will say to, to protect Kansas Fishing Game, they didn't go into details, they just said that they would help us facilitate. Relocating them and that's about all they would tell me, so.
Okay, okay.
So I, I don't know what. What the regulations or if they cross, I don't know, but I just know that they are willing to help us relocate.
I would say that's your best bet, I think we will. Bring it forward to us to us. Like, remember. For the future. Because. I raised rabbits.
Yeah, and.
They were caged.
Yeah, and you, you can definitely tell the difference between the. I wanna say pet rabbits versus the, the wild rabbits up in that area, so. I know you can't get close to them, you walk up and they take off running, so. It, it could be even a challenge trapping them, we're, we're, we've got some ideas off the internet and talking to different people who. Gives us ideas on what to even put in the trap to catch them, but this might be a one rabbit at a time deal, I, I don't know. So I'm, I'm learning as we go on this.
That's a good start, maybe we'll get some more feedback on some other options as.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm open to anything, any suggestions. Thank you guys.
Real quick, an update on the housing complex that I learned last night, um, we have four more years on loan and after that, we would. I think the, the, the facility would probably come back to the city, we'd need to sell it, whatever. With this grant we got, we do need to stay low income for a certain number of years and Sheila has found out that if we refinance the loan. We can stay low income for another fifteen years. Um, we'll get a lower interest rate and. Um, payment will go down and we can keep the facility as it is, so just wanted to give you a heads up, we'll have a discussion item next meeting. And Sheila's coming to present. For the complex and she's gonna stick around and then we can talk about it, so she'll have some more answers on things at that point.
I just wanted to give a big thank you to the men and women for the Change the World Project, um, they did an awesome job at the planter at City Park and also the gazebo. For the, sorry, the East Shelter House, uh, painting wise, it looks really good, very much appreciated.
Staff reports. Hey, Mayor Kushner comments and reports. Marcia? I don't have anything. Chuck or Ashley, do you have anything?
I regret the difficulty with our, oh, go ahead, Ashley.
No, I was just gonna say, um, I, I wanted to recognize Curie Stupar in his passing, um, he was somebody who was. Um, a little hesitant about the Broadway Plaza project, but then he got in and, uh, of course completed that project and it was absolutely beautiful. And he had so much pride in that project and I noticed in his obituary this week that um, contributions were to go to the Broadway Plaza. So I just wanted to recognize him in his passing and wish his wife well and his family, um, for, you know, contributing to such an important project. And many others in our community.
I second that and his tremendous work ethic, he'll be missed. Chuck? Mayor Lambert, sorry.
I just regret the difficulty with the technology upfront, but I appreciate the opportunity to participate uh, remotely, so, um, let's just. Appreciate that and appreciate the patience.
Good jerk.
Alright. The second, and all in favor? All opposed, same sign?